...protections afforded by the First and Fourteenth Amendments of the U.S. Constitution and Article One, Section Eleven of the Pennsylvania Constitution. Accordingly, I respectfully request a formal written response to my complaint, confirmation of whether a written or informal policy or directive exists prohibiting the photography of open records, a complete copy of any such policy or directive currently in effect, and the specific legal authority relied upon to justify this restriction, a full accounting of all funds collected by the county, including but not limited to the Prothonitory and Election Division in connection with the enforcement of any policy prohibiting photography of public records. This request includes total revenue received from copy fees associated with in-person public records requests, any internal policies, memoranda, or guidelines governing the assessment or collection of such fees, the fiscal deposition of such funds, e.g., general fund deposit, departmental use, or other allocation, and I request the above-listed information for the current fiscal year and the previous fiscal year. This letter is submitted as a continuation of the administrative record, and I request a substantive response by September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. If no response is received, I will proceed with my formal complaint to the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records, and if necessary, pursue legal action to obtain appropriate relief. Thank you for your prompt attention to this matter.
Thank you. Do you want to give a copy? You could give it to the sheriff, he'll give it. Do you want to?
I do, and I also want to bring your notice to this photograph that's attached. This is what is up in the prothonitory, and there is similar signage in the election office right now.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have Gail Pruninger. I'm going to speak tonight. My name is Gail Pruninger, and I live in Bethlehem Township. I'm here to ask counsel to take a stand and stop the erosion of our freedom of speech. You should allow Kelly Keegan to continue representing her constituents in Northampton County, Council District Two. In East Germany under Russia, the secret police called Stasi spied on the people and suppressed dissent against the communist regime. Kelly Keegan's Facebook posting got attention from right-wing groups looking for posts not favorable to Charlie Kirk's positions. Those groups reported individuals with non-favorable comments to their employers, as was the case for Kelly Keegan. This has happened to college professors, teachers, journalists, and comedians. Such reporting and punishing fellow citizens is wrong and un-American. Kelly Keegan should be allowed to serve her full term on council. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, I have Al Smith.
Al Smith, the, is this on?
Yes.
Al Smith, borough of Nazareth. I didn't write anything up for this. My main reason to make a few words here is basically that when you're an elected official, you have to be cognizant of your words. When you post things on social media, you better be pretty damn sure what you're putting out there is not going to be inflammatory and completely stupid.
Thank you.
What Kelly did was quite stupid, quite frankly. To actually make a comment publicly, as a public official, that this was a, the death of this gentleman man Charlie Kirk was a benefit to his family was, quite frankly, saying insensitive is quite not enough, obviously. She's an elected official, she's not going to leave office, so what if I say her can go down that ridiculous road? But she certainly should take some note that we're not happy about this. The Republican Committee certainly, and a conservative part of it, I'm libertarian, by the way, I put that in there as a little caveat, even this group, we're not going to sit back and condemn her for free speech, that's kind of stupid and foolish, actually. We're certainly going to condemn the process by which she put forward, the antagonistic hatred that's brought up because of this. I typically, I'm not a dictator, occasionally I go to the Mackenzie, Mondays with Mackenzie rallies. They have between a hundred and two hundred protesters there. We believe mostly people are actually paid by their behavior and other things. When I go there, typically, they come up to me angry, pissed off, and I typically am able to do a Charlie Kirk with them. We sit down, we know we're having a conversation, and they leave typically impressed by the ability to exchange ideas, even though we don't typically agree, by the way. I think Ms. Keegan should go and take some notice of Charlie Kirk and exactly how he handled himself throughout his short life on this planet. It would benefit us all tremendously. I'm not really pleased that she's a nurse in a school system. I have children, I have children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. I would not want these young people being influenced by anything she's putting forward in a public school situation. Not asking for her to be fired, certainly some kind of corrective measure should happen. You certainly should not be posting inflammatory things, again, on social media. It is extraordinarily stupid. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Dr. Scott Janney.
Thank you. My name is Scott Janney. I'm a member of the Northampton County Republican Leadership from Williams Township. On this day after the recent deaths of several police officers in York County in the line of duty, I would like to first pause for a second to honor Deputy Sheriff Nathan Ogden, whose portrait hangs in this building, who was the first police officer to die in the line of duty in seventeen seventy-one. Also this week, on Tuesday, September sixteenth, the United States Senate, including forty-seven Democrats and Democrat-leaning independents unanimously, unanimously, including all Democrats, fought past the following resolution: Resolved that the Senate condemns the assassination of Charlie Kirk in the strongest terms, extends its deepest condolences and sympathies to Charlie Kirk's family, including his wife Erica, and their two young children, and honors Charlie Kirk's commitment to the constitutional principles of civil discussion and debate between all people of the United States, regardless of their political affiliation. But our council has some people of much lower character than the one hundred senators in the U.S. Senate. If this council fails to meaningfully, meaningfully limit the hateful speech and power of Kelly Keegan and her words, you have failed the test of a civil political body, and the Democrats on the council, whoever votes against a motion to have some meaningful discipline, has failed the test of base humanity. In less than two months, I pray that the people of Northampton County will show that they have more humanity than their current elected public leaders. A vote this year for any Democrat for this council is a vote to award Kelly Keegan and give her hate a stronger voice. A vote for any of these, Tara Zrinsky, Jason Boulet, Teresa Fadham, Lisa Vargo Hefner, David Holland, or Nadine Kayoune, is a vote for more power for Kelly Keegan's hate.
Sir, your time's up, I'm sorry. Finish your last thought.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Next, I have Glenn Geisner.
Glenn Geisner, seventeen oh one, Raleigh Meadows Drive, Penrithville, Pennsylvania. I want to first thank you, because I noticed on your agenda tonight is an opportunity to rein in the executive and his tyrannical pimp to take your authority and power away from you. You are the ones that were elected by the people to govern the elections in Northampton County, and I appreciate that you are going to consider, in order to rein in, what he is attempting to do, to destroy the proper election processes that were put in place by the Commonwealth in order to ensure free and fair elections in Northampton County. So that is my first statement. My second statement: I would be remiss, regardless of party, if I did not stand to condemn Ms. Keegan's remarks. I have sat where you sat, and I have said this before, and that gives me no special privilege, other than the fact that I have four years of experience of learning to know when to speak and when to shut up. It is very difficult sometimes, when you feel emotional about something, to refrain from speaking out, and I respect that. But it is more important that the civility of our society is kept in a way where elected officials show respect, especially to widows and children. Now, you have no authority to remove an elected official from your body, I understand that, but you do have the authority to censure. You have the authority to ensure that through your actions and through your words, she understands that such activities, such horrendous comments will not be tolerated. We cannot allow the hate to grow. We cannot allow the fact that we wear separate colors in an election or on separate sides of an aisle in a body to continue to create, infest, or hate, or anger. We may disagree, but ultimately, I hope that we are all committed to the idea that a better United States and a better Pennsylvania and a better Northampton County is the ultimate goal. No matter how we feel, we need to get there. So please, utilize the fact that you represent all the people to ensure that Ms. Keegan understands that what she has done is unacceptable in the eyes of the Republic. Thank you.
That's the last of the people that are signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? If you do, you need to come forward, you need to state your name, or you will not be recognized. You only get five minutes, one at a time. Because I have this button, just go ahead.
Christina Martinez.
Thank you. Where are you from? What town are you from?
Eastern.
Thank you.
Thanks. My name's Christina Martinez. I am an Eastern Area School District parent and a resident of Northampton County. I never thought that I would have to stand here and ask our elected leaders to address something so basic. Whether someone who openly spews hatred belongs in public office. Councilwoman Kelly Keegan has made her views clear, not in a private conversation, but in public posts for the world to see. She called Charlie Kirk a Christian and a conservative activist a monster, said his wife and children are better off without him, as is the world. This isn't political disagreement, this is dehumanization. And her words don't stop there. I'm not sure if you all have seen her other Facebook posts, but she celebrated the idea of white men becoming a minority and spoke gleefully about them shriveling up. I want you to pause and ask, what message does that send to white men in our county, to white little boys, to conservatives, to Christians? If she thinks that we are all monsters and the world is better off without us, shouldn't we take her at her word? How can we trust her to act in the best interest of our white male children and actually care for them in our schools? The very children that she says she wants to see shrivel. How can we trust her to govern fairly for families like mine? She's not governing for me, for my children, for my family, and as a parent, that's frightening. When I told my sons that I wanted to speak tonight, my nine-year-old said, "Mommy, what if they shoot you?" That is unacceptable. This isn't about party lines. This is about trust, decency, and the moral responsibility of leadership. Our elected officials are supposed to represent all of us, even those of us they disagree with. When someone in a position of power broadcasts such hate, it sends a chilling message that some of us don't count, that our voices don't matter, that we are less than. Trust in leadership is fragile, and once it's broken, it's hard to repair. I know that you can't remove Councilwoman Keegan, but I ask that you ask her to resign. I think that allowing her to remain in her position would undermine the very foundation of trust between government and the people it serves. Councilmembers, I'm asking you, not out of anger, but out of deep concern and sadness to take this matter seriously. The people of this county deserve leaders who lift us up, not tear us apart. We deserve leaders who model respect, not contempt, and we deserve to know that when we walk into this chamber, every single voice matters. For the sake of this community, for the sake of our children, I respectfully ask you to ask Kelly Keegan to resign from this council. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
If you could hold your applause till the end, because that cuts into their time to speak, and you only get five minutes. Who said next? I need your name, please.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Harrison. I live at six one six Rob Street, Eastern PA. I have been an Eastern resident for forty-eight years. I'd first like to take this opportunity to give glory to God for giving me the choice to be at this table in front of the people right now, say, "Jesus Christ is our Lord and Savior, he is King of kings." Kelly Keegan's online behavior has crossed a deeply troubling line. She did not simply make a poor choice of words in the heat of the moment. She openly cheered the assassination of Charlie Kirk and went so far as to celebrate the death of Ed Reagan, a respected local community member who had publicly disagreed with her in the past. Even more disturbing, she has mocked children with disabilities, showing cruelty toward the very students she has entrusted to care for. This pattern of conduct cannot be dismissed as a lapse in judgment. It speaks to the very core of who she is as a person. To revel in the death of others, both nationally and within her own community, while ridiculing vulnerable children, reveals a dangerous lack of empathy and a profound hostility that has no place in public life. The people of our community deserve leaders and professionals who model decency, respect, and humanity, not individuals who glorify violence and death. Keegan's words are not just offensive, they are corrosive to the values of compassion and integrity that should guide anyone in the position of responsibility. The First Amendment, the Constitution, does not protect the glorification of political assassination. The First Amendment protects citizens from government censorship. It does not shield hate-filled individuals who cheer the murder of Charlie Kirk from accountability. Celebrating violence isn't speech, it's incitement. It's dangerous, and it endangers our children, it destabilizes our communities, and it fans the flames of civil unrest. You may be free to speak, but you are not free from the consequences. Employers, schools, and communities have every right and duty to reject and remove those who openly cheer on political violence. Hiding behind free speech is nothing more than a coward's excuse for hate. So I humbly ask you, please, please, to take this very seriously and ask Kelly Keegan to resign from her position. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hannah Crywannis.
Say it again.
Hannah Crywannis.
Thank you.
I live in Northampton, Pennsylvania. I'm twenty years old, I was born and raised here in Northampton County. This is my home, and I care deeply for the people who live here, the schools that educate our children, and the leaders that we elect to represent us. And that is why I am so deeply disturbed by the actions of Councilwoman Kelly Keegan. It is a fact that Ms. Keegan publicly celebrated the murder of Charlie Kirk. And let's call that what it is, it is a nurse, an elected official, and a public servant cheering death. This is not about a political affiliation, this is not about whether you agree or disagree with Charlie Kirk's ideas. This is about an elected leader and a registered nurse crossing the most basic moral line, glorifying violence, and celebrating a human being's murder. When Ms. Keegan made this post, three things happened. One, she destroyed public trust. Residents cannot believe that she will barely represent this county when she shows joy at the death of someone she opposes. That is not leadership, it is hate. Two, she normalized violence. Words matter, especially from officials, and when a leader celebrates killing, it sends a message that violence is acceptable if it is against the right people, that is reckless, dangerous, and incompatible with public service. And three, she stayed in this council. Every member of Northampton County Council is implemented if nothing is done. Silence will be seen as complicity, and inaction says that this behavior is acceptable for a county leader. And I want to add something personal. I am a nursing student, and every day I am being trained in a profession whose core values are compassion, dignity, and preservation of life. Nurses are trusted with the most vulnerable moments of people's lives, and whether that is at a bedside or a school nurse's office. And that is why I cannot understand, as a nursing student, how a nurse like Kelly Keegan could ever celebrate death. She is employed as a nurse at Eastern Area School District, parents trust her with their children, students rely on her for safety and care, and yet she has demonstrated publicly that she is willing to mock the value of life and glorify violence. This is a betrayal of the nursing profession, it is a betrayal of the public trust, and it is utterly incompatible with holding elected office. And some will argue that this is free speech, and yes, she has the right to speak. The First Amendment protects her from government censorship, but it does not shield her from accountability, and free speech does not mean freedom from consequences. When you hold elected office, your words shape policy, public trust, and the example set for your community. When you hold the title of a nurse, your words reflect on the integrity of a profession built on compassion, advocacy, and protecting life. And in both roles, words are not just opinions, they are extensions of duty. If those words glorify violence or celebrate murder, then they are not harmless expressions, they are direct contradictions of the oaths, codes of ethics, and public trust that comes with these positions. That is not speech, that is disqualification. To argue otherwise but to say that leadership carries no responsibility, that nursing carries no ethical standards, and that the community must accept anything in the name of free expression, even words that wound, divide, and betray the very values that these roles demand, and that is unacceptable. The people of Northampton County are watching, parents in Eastern are watching, and the next generation is watching. This council must act. Open a form of investigation into misleading conduct, issue a public censor, demand her immediate recognition from Northampton County Council, and if she refuses to resign, pursue her removal under Pennsylvania law for misbehavior in office and violation of ethical standards. Anything less tells the public that it is acceptable for an elected official in Northampton County to glorify violence and celebrate death. Ms. Keegan has crossed a line that cannot be uncrossed, she has celebrated murder, she has betrayed the values of her office, the values of her profession, and the values of this community. We cannot trust her to lead, we cannot trust her to serve, and we certainly cannot trust her to sit on this council while representing Northampton County. For the sake of our county's integrity, our school's safety, and the moral standard of public service, Kelly Keegan must be removed from Northampton County Council. Thank you.
There you go, Hannah!
Could I, wait just one minute. Hannah, can I please ask you to spell your last name for us? She needs the mic to do that, sorry. I tried, but I'm sure I didn't get it right. Thank you. That's close.
Good job, Hannah.
Good job.
Thank you again. Sir?
My name is Brandon Matlak. First name, B-R-A-N-D-O-N-M-A-T-L-A-C-K. I'm from Bethlehem. Don't really feel comfortable giving out my personal address.
You don't have to, sir. Bethlehem's fine.
And more than that, I am Charlie Kirk. I'm a political activist, I'm a conservative political activist, and Ms. Keegan's comments lead me to believe that I shouldn't feel safe in Northampton County, that one of the sitting members of this body want me dead. That is what her comments mean. She wants me to die, and if something were to happen to me, she would celebrate it. That is deeply troubling for anyone in political office to say that, and it's so rare that we hear things like this. So I expect this body will be taking some sort of action, because I set up in Bethlehem, not far away from what Charlie Kirk would do. I set up a table, I campaigned for what I believe in, and I often get into disagreements with people. Bethlehem's a very democratic city. So am I to expect that any of those people who disagree with me now are allowed to shoot me and they will be shielded by city council? Because that's how I feel now, is that if someone were to come up and physically attack me in Bethlehem, that would be A-OK with you guys. That's what it feels like, is that you guys, you know, the police could arrest the person, and you probably have him out the same day with your Soros DA. That's what's going on here, and I feel threatened, and everybody else that's a conservative activist, they don't feel threatened, they should be. And there's one other thing I see being brought up a lot by the Democratic side, and it's this freedom of speech issue, which I'm a free speech absolutist. I think anybody should say whatever they want. But what it does not mean, what free speech does not entail is freedom from consequences. What free speech gives you is meaning these men to my left and right cannot arrest me for what I say. That's it. It means you cannot be arrested for speech. It does not mean everybody else has to let you say whatever you want, whenever they want. You can be removed from private property if you say something that a person doesn't like, you can be banned from a business if you say something they don't like, you can be fired from your job because you say something they don't like. That's all OK. And a lot of people seem very confused by that. It's only shielding you from government intervention in your speech. I cannot stress that enough. But this body needs to do something. You cannot do nothing, because as many other speakers have said, it erodes public trust, it makes people like myself feel unsafe in the community for speaking my mind and campaigning for what I believe in, and that's not OK, not OK for any Republican, any Libertarian, any Democrat for that reason. They should be able to go out and say what they want, and they should be free from political violence, just like everybody else. So Ms. Keegan's comments, they're not just comments. She's making people in this community, her constituents, feel unsafe, and she is OK with that. We've all seen her double down on social media. We could all excuse emotional, you know, excited utterance, as they would legally be called, we can excuse that, but when you come on social to defend what you have said and then double down and triple down, not to mention, how can she even swear the Hippocratic Oath when she clearly has no value on human life? She places no value on human life and celebrates death, and we're supposed to believe this lady should keep her RN license? Not only should you censor her, censor, sorry, you should censor her, you should report, you should do something with the State Medical Board. I don't understand how she can be a licensed practitioner of medicine when she places no value on human life. That's completely unacceptable. So I beg for my safety and the safety of all Northamptonites that you do something here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna be brief, because we've been applauding and chewing into time. Robert Dandy.
Dan, Dan.
Dandy, I'll spell it for you, it's real complicated. D is.
Oh, it's not. I just, I thought it was Dan V, but Dan D.
Mail address is Bethlehem. You know, I'm gonna keep it brief, like I said, I'm gonna reclaim the time from all the applause and such stuff. When people show you who they are, believe them. When people show you who they are, believe them. And when you see comments, like we've all seen, that celebrate political assassination, you guys gotta do something, okay? Again, I don't want to go all hyper-Christian or anything like that, no matter what everybody believes and so on and so forth, but, you know, it does say in that old good book that we all probably remember from Sunday School, "From an abundance of the heart, the mouth speaketh." From an abundance of the heart, the mouth speaketh. And just like Brandon over there had said, you know, every once in a while, everybody gets out of hand, we all know everybody gets a little bit out of hand. But two, as Brandon said, double and triple down on those same comments, I don't know, you guys gotta do something here. This is not a time, I don't want to live in a county that has a representative supposedly of me that sits around and celebrates political, heinous political assassination. Right, right in front of the guy's kids. A lot of us here have kids. You guys have got to do something. I mean, I know, we have an election coming up, and we're, you know, hell-bent on making sure that we resolve this politically and by voting and so on and so forth, because I, I don't know, I mean, we don't live in East Germany or whatever the crazy thing is, you know. When I was a young man with the State Department, I was behind the Iron Curtain. I know other people who were behind the Iron Curtain at the time. This doesn't resemble, I don't know, the Soviet Union or East Germany to me. We're all here, everybody's good, we're speaking our minds, this is the way the process is supposed to work. But I'm not calling for your assassinations. I'd like to beat a lot of you at the voting booth, that's for sure, this upcoming November, but I'm not talking about killing anybody, right? And I think that you should make Kelly Keegan's absence here tonight permanent. The woman's a coward by not coming here and facing her constituents. The woman's a coward by not coming here and facing her constituents. She's a coward hiding behind social media. I know you can hear me, Kelly. You need to resign. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Valerie Moonen, N-O-O-N-A-N. I'm a resident of the city of Bethlehem. And I'm here for a different reason, I think, than a lot of people tonight. So enjoy the break. I'm here tonight to ask what Northampton County is doing to help unhoused people in the wake of Norfolk Southern Rail Company, UGI, and PennDOT choosing to evict the encampments along the canal, which stretch across both Northampton and Lehigh Counties. I find this to be a horrible prioritization of profit over people. The notices that were put... The notices were posted on September 10th. And the evictions will be enforced as of December 15th. Some residents will be able to go to Bethlehem emergency shelters, at least for the winter. But what about after that? And what about people who cannot or will not use the shelter? The Bethlehem Health Bureau is working hard to find solutions for residents, now upping their visits from a few times a week to nearly every day. Northampton County also needs to do its part. This is a systemic issue across the Lehigh Valley. A fact made especially apparent by the fact that in Lehigh County, a similar eviction is to be enforced along Jordan Creek starting on September 29th. It is likely that even with the upcoming eviction in Bethlehem already announced, many of the former residents of the Jordan Creek encampments will move east, meaning Bethlehem City workers will need to manage even more cases. By recognizing this as an urgent regional issue, my hope is that more vulnerable people can find a safe place to shelter. Thank you.
Hi, I have some prepared remarks. I just need to... Hi, my name is Kathleen Sofer. I live in Easton. I'm speaking in support of Keegan's continued role as a school nurse and council member. I would like to clarify, I do not know her personally, since people have already accused me of that. Free speech is a precious, hard-won American right, and we must protect it. Protecting it means standing up in support of people saying something you may personally disagree with. Kelly violated no laws. She expressed her personal opinion, as I have seen so many people do in the last week and so many people do at this meeting, and many of whom I strongly disagree with. But I am not marching on their place of work demanding censure or termination. Because I know the world is full of people who disagree with me. And at the end of the day, I am glad I live in a place where they can do that without fearing for their lives or their livelihoods. Practiced politicians are using this incident as an opportunity to divide the local community and push a personal agenda that is at odds with the way I have learned Easton and Northampton residents operate, with patience, clear communication, and grace for their neighbors. Bravery is required of all elected representatives at this pivotal moment in American history. It is not a small or simple sacrifice. And I do not envy the position you are in. But I urge you to think about why you ran for this council and how you want to shape the future of Northampton County. Do you want it to be a place that represents the best of America? A place where people can openly disagree with one another and still work together to build a better society? Or do you want it to be an oppressive place where people are afraid to express an opinion that goes against the most narrow and rigid rules of what is allowed to be said? Thank you. Thank you.
Free speech isn't free speech.
That's a warning. I need people to keep it together. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sophia Fernandez Fernandez. I'm a student at Eastern Area High School. And I do not have a speech prepared because when I walked into this meeting, I wasn't expecting it to be the way that it is. I expected that the people of our county would be more sympathetic towards people like me. Like, for example, as you might have noticed by my last names, I am Hispanic, which I feel like this room is sorely lacking representation in the minority department, which is why this opinion is very one-sided, in my opinion. I don't like the fact that everybody keeps talking about broadcasting hate when Charlie Kirk himself broadcasted a lot of hate. But because he fit into your rhetoric...
Ms. Fernandez, please hold. If one more person speaks and interrupts the person of the day, I will have you removed. Everyone's getting the right for their five minutes uninterrupted. Thank you.
Because he is speaking, or he was speaking, the rhetoric that you all ascribe to, his speech is more viable than Kelly Keegan's. I think you are biased in your thinking. Everybody here who has spoken on behalf of Ms. Keegan's resignation. As a student at Eastern Area High School, I do not feel like I have been influenced in any way, nor do I believe that any of my peers have been influenced in any way by Kelly Keegan. You guys are not members of the school district. You have not been under or like served by Kelly Keegan. So you do not have that perspective, but I do. You are speaking about protecting children when Charlie Kirk notoriously said that gun violence was necessary, that the school shooting of children was necessary to protect the Second Amendment right. Those children were not being protected. I do not feel protected. You do not care about the children. You do not care about Kelly Keegan or what she was saying. You just care that she was going against your rhetoric and your fixed action pattern and your biased beliefs. I am sorely ashamed that these are the people who came to this county and who came to this county meeting and decided to advocate for the people of Easton, to advocate against the nurse who was just speaking her mind and truly was exercising her right to free speech. You guys have said some truly heinous things, like she would be reveling in your deaths or that she would, she wants to see your white male children shrivel. But her free speech is the dangerous one. And you are not, you are not spreading hateful rhetoric yourselves. I believe that everybody here in this council who has spoken before me tonight, who is wearing a MAGA shirt or a Trump hat or who is waving "I am Charlie Kirk", you guys are hypocrites. That, that's all I got. Thank you.
Bill Timm, T-I-M-M, A-N-N, Easton.
Wait, T-I-M-M?
A-N-N.
Sorry. Thank you.
I'm here tonight, I'm listening to everybody. There's good points, wrong points. I do disagree with pretty much everybody's opinion up that has already spoken to where it said that you have no power to... Your position as council is to make policy for the county. You can make new laws for the county to include a code of conduct for the council, for the county employees, for... to cover yourselves and to judge yourselves, as well as every employee from a sheriff's deputy to the, um, uh, to La Montla Plour. That can be put in. You could make this law. It can be written, voted on, approved. When it comes to Kelly Keegan and her hate speech, as others have said, yes, it is hate speech. There is a difference between freedom of speech and freedom of hate speech. The Democrats are notorious, and I have been inundated for years on social media with Democrats defraying other people having freedom of speech, where they will walk up to somebody with a bullhorn right in their face, screaming and yelling at them when they don't like what the other person is saying. And they will stop. As Charlie would normally do, he would stop, listen, wait till they're done, "OK, now my turn to speak." And then he would speak himself. Charlie is a better man than I am. I would not have that con demeanor after dealing with everything he's dealt with through countless debates and meet and greets. Simple and fair is, there's freedom of speech. And then there is the Democrat council culture that they've done, going after people to get them fired. It has been done in the past. But the difference there with that is today, it is not cancel culture. It is accountability culture that is being called on. What's happened in the past with Democrats, when somebody spoke up they didn't like, they went, they were demanding that the person be fired, terminated from their job. What conservatives, I'm seeing, and Libertarians, moderates, even moderate Democrats I've met that have said, "This is wrong." They're not saying, "She has to be fired." What they're saying is, "Look at this. Is this what you want representing you? Is this what you want representing council? Is this what you want representing Eastern Area School District?" Kelly Keegan, she's here by Zoom. So I hate to say this in the aspect of just with my own eyes. This is a typical keyboard warrior. She's fine to say what she wants behind the safety of her computer screen, but she's not willing to come out and stand up to the people that she's supposed to be representing and be accountable for her words and her actions. I think the council needs to come up with a resolution changing the Home Rule Charter, creating a code of ethics. And then if everything hasn't blown over by then, then at that point, if people still wish in two, three months, however long it takes for this to come to fruition, if they are still calling for her to be terminated beyond the censuring or anything else, then I think it should be brought up and voted for her at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. Sandra Libby, L-I-B-B-Y, Bethlehem Township. So the remarks that were made are very unacceptable. When I was 10 years old, my father murdered my mother in front of me. And it's unacceptable. I live in this county and I rely on you people to make things good in my little world, Bethlehem Township. And remarks like that aren't gonna cut it with me. OK? And where there's me, there's other people out there that went through similar, maybe situations like mine. I would ask that you definitely have her resign. She is unacceptable to represent what we have voted for. OK? Whether it's political or not, that doesn't matter. OK? People take things to heart. OK? I'm 62 years old. I never forgot what happened. And let me tell you, my father murdered my mother, right? In front of me, like I said. And I would be appalled if someone celebrated that absolutely beside myself. OK? So think about people, humans. OK? We're all humans. OK? We put our trust in people. Take that in consideration. OK? No one wants to hear that kind of stuff. No one. It carries with us, in our entire lives, stuff that happens. There was young kids that witnessed it. I witnessed what I witnessed. OK? It affects everyone's lives. He lost his life. It didn't just affect his little world. It affected a lot of other people. OK? Breaks up a lot of things. Just keep that in mind. All right? We're all human. Do the right thing. Honestly, do the right thing for all of us. Do the right thing. Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead. My name is Richard Siegfried. I'm from Forks Township. If Kelly can see me, "Hi, Kelly. You know me well because you've harassed me. You had your husband harass me for being at a school board meeting. You're a wicked witch."
Sorry, sir. Tell me where you're from again, I didn't...
Forks Township.
Sorry.
And there's a couple other council members, at least one other council member on here that likes to like Kelly's posts. Right, Jeff? You have more than one problem here on council when somebody's cheering on the other one, this posting stuff. What, this young lady over here, this nurse? She said it all. You need to listen to her. And you need to ask Kelly's, for Kelly's resignation. I don't need any more police call from me because I went to a school board meeting and questioned her husband. But I did. I had it. Nothing happened, though, Kelly, because it was a bunch of bullshit. So I would ask you to listen to these folks and especially that young lady. Kelly shouldn't be in the nurse's office. She should have her license revoked. And that should be the next thing that we, the people, do, is work to get Kelly's license revoked. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Mark Ozimek, O-Z-I-M-E-K. I come from Lower Salkin Township, Reddington Road. The gun club is my backyard. The first thing I want to say, because I think of a couple, that do not give a million, millions of dollars tax break to these people with a couple in the building over here, building apartments, for the amount of money that they want to charge for an apartment. We get too much of that going on in this county already. That's number one. Number two, I don't know Kelly Keegan, if that's her, whatever her name is. I never had any interaction with her. But I did have interaction with the courthouse, the judges, district attorneys, sheriff's departments, and Lower Salkin Township Police. And I can tell you that the speech that comes out of some public officials is absurd. What she said may have been free speech. She didn't go to incite a riot. She didn't go to incite death. She didn't talk people into shooting anybody. But what she did say was reprehensible. No matter who you are, America got freedom of speech, but you're not free to say just anything you want. You can't go on an airplane and say, like Bill Cosby did, "Damn, let's like shoot up the plane and make it go down." That don't work. That's not society. So I don't know the lady. You guys do. I don't know. I don't, I don't know if she should be taken off the board, and I don't know if that's possible because Lower Salkin Township has a current issue with two members, Jason Bananas and Thomas Girochi. And if you do anything, if you can do anything, you warn her. And you start taking public officials and you make them accountable for their actions. I spent three days in Northampton County jail because Jason Bananas decided to lie to Thomas Barm, and after two or three weeks of time, they concocted a traffic ticket that I kept fighting. Not a traffic ticket, a citation. And Judge Slutfold decided to just go with it. Because I ended up hiring a lawyer, and I had a lousy lawyer, somebody who wanted to become a judge in Lehigh County. Dave Ritter. So, you know, this isn't just a Northampton County problem. This is a United States problem. I watch a lot of YouTube, and I post all the videos from Lower Salkin Township. I post other videos that I watch from lawyers, and I study a lot. That's why I know, free speech you can have, but you can't threaten anybody within that free speech. That's against the law. Personal feelings and personal opinions might not always be right, but it is still free speech. Oh, and with that, the nerves got me going. Do something, and when you do it for your council, you do it for the entire county. Bethlehem's pretty good, because I've been to theirs, but Lower Salkin is a wreck. And as far as Hellertown, they got their own wreck. And it seems everybody, no matter who you are, when you go to get in office, everybody has their own little clique, their own little, "I want to do this, I want to do that, I want to go this way, I want to go that way." You know what? It's not about you. It's about what the voters voted for to put you in office, so you're supposed to be taking care of them. That's your job. I guess that's it.
One minute.
Back to the, back to the homeless people the girl was talking about, something needs to be done. You really got to do something. Build cheaper housing, whatever. The $2,500 a month for rent, that's absurd. It's just, the world's out of control. Don't help it lose more of what sanity is left. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor? Thank you. Hey, I, I'm another group, we do it three times. Thank you very much. I wish to speak to courtesy of the floor. I have prepared some remarks. I'm Lori Vargo Heffner from Lower Salkin Township, and I'm your council president, not Lisa. You don't, you dare vote for Lisa Vargo Heffner. Thank you. I've received several messages from constituents this week with concerns about a social media post. I want to acknowledge reading all of them and thank our citizens for participating in county government with their correspondence. I want to address some of those concerns that I can. Some of you have called for her removal from Easton School District, I have no purview over that matter. I have consulted with our solicitor, and we have reviewed the Home Rule Charter, Administrative Code, and our Council Code of Conduct. While the county has a clear social media policy for employees, it does not apply to council, as we are elected officials and not supervised by the administration. We are a body comprised of nine members who serve at the pleasure of those who elected us to fill these positions. We take an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We are expected to collaborate, debate, discuss issues, and oversee the county budget and create legislation. We are expected to follow our Code of Civility and to have these discussions with respect for everyone's opinion. While some of us are subdued in our approach, and others more vociferous, we all have a right to our opinions heard in this room. What any of us think, feel, or believe outside of this room in the privacy of our own lives is not governed by this code. We, as a body, have a limited authority to call for the removal of commissioner, and according to the Charter, these conditions are not met by private actions on social media. As president of council, I was elected to ensure that this body runs smoothly, and I have made it my mission to ensure that each of us gets time and deference to express our views in meetings. I take the separation of powers seriously and defend this body's right to independently make decisions. I serve all the citizens of the county and choose to do so with decorum and dignity, not dysregulation. I was elected to serve in this role and recognize that this means to represent all of you, respective of party, privilege, or beliefs. I take the privilege of the public's right to address us just as seriously, and I ask for your respect and tolerance of us while doing so. While I may disagree with my colleagues at time, either professionally or personally, I will continue to honor the code and the work of this body as a whole. I continue to be willing to hear you and, to the best of my ability, address your concerns when possible. I thank you for hearing and supporting this council's work. I want to thank you all for respecting the process that we have here. I respect you for coming out this evening, and that concludes courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone else from council that wishes to speak at this time?
I knew you would.
I want to start by suggesting that I'm probably not wrong in believing that most of the people I spoke here tonight probably didn't vote for Kelly Keegan. There are people that did vote for her, however, and they might still want to vote for her again. And freedom of speech means that although we might not agree with what she said, there is another portion of the population that might. And if they want to vote for her again, if she runs again, and she gets elected again, that is democracy. Now, I don't believe hate speech is pulled from free speech. I think you should be able to say whatever you want. And I always used to argue, when I would argue with people that feel more sensitive than me, that "You can't say anything to me that will get me to lose my cool." Now, I might get aggressive in my retort, but I'm not going to cry, I'm not going to lose my wit. And when I read what Kelly wrote, I thought to myself, "Boy, that wasn't very smart on her part." Because it makes her look, and I've, I'll say this to her before, I've said it to her before, we sit here on council, and we need to try to convince each other to see things the way we see each other. We can't pass anything by ourselves. And I think Kelly just made herself a lot less agreeable with the rest of council. Made herself a lot less powerful, because that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to convince other people to see the things that we see and try to get things done the way we want to see things done. We all have agendas, that's why we ran, we all believe in things. I believe in freedom of speech. I believe that, as much as I disagree with some people, if they want to say things, they can say them. Now, I would respectfully ask Kelly, since she's not here, I believe that she is, uh, admitting fault. She doesn't want to face you people, because she might realize she said something wrong. If she would like to resign, I would accept it. Unfortunately, we can't make her resign. That is the way this works. She got elected by people like who aren't here. So we have to respect that fact, just because we're not saying, censuring her and going through things that have no real teeth, because they don't, they're meaningless. You can't make her go anywhere she doesn't want to go somewhere. What the Easton Area School District does is their business, what Northampton County Council does is ours. So I appreciate everybody coming here and being civil, it was a great display of our democracy. And there's, uh, the last segment on the agenda is about political speech, so, political violence. So if you want to stick around, maybe more conversation regarding that, so, thank you.
Yes? Okay. Keep going. Next, uh, County Executive Report, he's not here.